Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'd like to open this May 5th Commissioners Meeting showing all three Commissioners, County Attorney, the Auditor President, and starting out here with some Department Updates. John.
Morning.
Morning, John.
Doing pretty well, but I've got some permits. First one I have is Permit Request 2517, Duke Energy's request to permit to install electrical service at a new home, 5725 South, Old US 31. See anything on there that...
Okay. Motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve John's permit.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Here is 3-0.
Second one I have is Permit Request 2518 from Lee's Escavating, the request to permit to install perimeter drain tile in the right-of-way for 300 feet, starting at 1090 west, 325 south, and then continuing east. I worked with Wyatt on this down the Health Department. So you're all right with it?
You're ready?
Yeah, it's the only option they have with that property for drainage. I'll make a motion to approve John's permit.
Good second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Here is 3-0.
Next one, 2519, the City of Rochester is requesting permit to install a new water main under County Road 50 east, 1,000 to 1,500 feet south of US 31, and then also install a new driveway entrance at that location.
Everything good by your account?
Yeah, this is unsure for their water tower project.
Is this approved?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Here is 3-0.
And the last one I have is Permit 2520, the City of Rochester again, and they're requesting permit to install a new water main under County Road 100 south, 175 feet west of State Route 25.
Everything all, all looks good?
Yeah, they're both boars, so...
Okay. Motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Here is 3-0.
The guys have been patching holes, grading gravel roads, we did, we've still been laying the millings when we can, changing culverts, and right now, they started last week over on 250 south, they're west of Huwanna, through that muck area that we've been digging out. That's turned, I mean, we knew it was going to be a big job, it's a huge job, about 13 feet deep, taking a lot of muck and pee, stinky rotten stuff out of there. They built that road on a, on timbers, it was a cory road.
Oh, really? Getting down to them, huh?
Pulling out all the old logs and they're still there preserved. Getting down, they found a good, good bottom, 13 feet down in a deeper spot, some of it's only three foot deep, but hopefully it all works out well.
Yeah, yeah, it works out.
Moving along good. Do have a pre-con meeting with USI and EMB Friday at night, eight o'clock at the garage for community crossing paving projects for that road and the other two for...
Eight o'clock and highway.
Should be pretty straightforward and quick. And the only other thing I brought to you today is I sent you a copy of this County White Bridge Inspection Contract from NDOT. I know we've talked about it, I just need approval so I can sign on the electronic sign course, which we have set up, but it has to be approved.
You look at it, you're all right with it?
Good.
I'll make a...
Basically boilerplate, right, or you know? I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract.
Let me rephrase that, to give John permission to sign the contract.
That's right.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded for John to be able to sign the contract, so, all in favor? Motion carries, 3-0.
Those are the only things I have for you today, if you have any questions for me.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. See, I'm getting quicker.
You, you're doing good because your wife's there.
Yeah, I don't want to hear about it.
Thanks, Patrick.
How about me this?
Good morning.
Kerry?
What I got first is I want to talk about the air handler on the roof of this building here, the annex. They'll be here tomorrow to start prepping to replace half of the chiller up there. They'll bring the crane in on Wednesday or Thursday, it's about 600 pounds, we're going to have to take the compressor, the old compressor off. So it's about a four or five day project. I've been fighting the air conditioner in this building for some time, had some problems with the stage one compressor also, but I think we've got it figured out. Had a lot of problems with some wiring, some fuses, and some safety switches, so... The next thing I got is the roof on the courthouse that was damaged. I think I talked to you guys about that in that straight line, straight line wind we had. The estimate is about $4,000. They're saying $3,600 plus they got the 120-foot lift they got to bring in to replace that, and I wanted to go ahead and get that started as soon as possible because I don't want water damage coming into that courthouse. So I wanted to let you know that, I'm scheduling that as soon as possible. I gave you a estimate, I think Dave the other day, on the elevator for the courthouse, the price to get that elevator back up and replace the power unit and the hydraulic oil and some other components. The work order price was $49,761.06.
Forty-nine thousand what?
$761.06. And I wanted to know if I could have approval to sign that contract and get them in here this summer to get that elevator up, up to where we need it to be.
How are we paying for that?
I'm going to pay for that out of my budget.
So as long as you're paying for it out of your budget?
Yeah, I'm going to pay for it out of equipment repair on the courthouse. My budget, I still have $64,000 in there, so that's what I'm going to use to try to pay for that.
I'll make a motion to give Kerry permission to sign that contract for $49,761.06. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to Kerry to sign the contract, get the elevator repaired in courthouse, all in favor?
And last, what I got is I did get all the first aid stations on every single floor in courthouse probation in the annex building. Probably seen the big red box out there. That'll be updated, Wildman will help me manage that to make sure nothing's out of date, they'll check it about every, between every three to six months, make sure anything in there is. That's all I got.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Goodbye Kerry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry.
Just a little, same fear, is that right? Okay, thank you.
Doug?
Just paperwork.
Okay. We've got paperwork here from Doug on the, for his grant, it gets every year, we do it every year, needs to be signed, we're looking for him to go forward, so, anything else major to say on that?
There should be a resolution in there that you need to do, right on top.
Oh, on top, okay. Resolution reads as such, and we got to put a number, so can we put a number on that one, or is there one already preset? 05, 05, 25, A?
Yeah.
Authorizing resolution, and is that, is this the back here need to be read too?
No.
No, it's front, okay. Resolution 05, 05, 20, 25A, resolution authorizing the filing of a CY 2026 application for a grant under Section 5311 slash 5339 for the Federal Transit Act as amended. Whereas, US Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants to states through the Federal Transit, FTA, to support capital operating and feasibility study assistance projects for unurbanized public transportation systems under Section 5311 of the FTA Act of 1964 as amended. Whereas, the Office of Transit, Indiana Department of Transportation, NDOT, has been designated by the Governor to make the Section 5311 slash 5339 grants available for public transportation projects, whereas the contract for the financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision, i.e., a portion of the local share of project costs. Now, thereby be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that Dave Summers on behalf of the Fulton County Commissioners is authorized to make the necessary certifications and assurances and empowered to make into agreement with NDOT for the provision of the rural public transportation services within Fulton County, Indiana. Number two, Fulton County Commissioners have designated the following nonprofit organization to coordinate and provide the 5311 funded rural public transit services within the county identified as, A, the Fulton County Council on Aging. Number three, the Fulton County Council on Aging is authorized to execute and to file an application with NDOT to aid the financing of the transit assistant projects pursuant to Section 5311 of the Federal Transit Act as amended. That the Fulton County Council on Aging is authorized to provide such additional information as NDOT may require in connection with the application. The certificate, the undersigned duly qualified and acting president Fulton County Commissioners certifies that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of the resolution adopted at legally convened meeting of the Fulton County Commissioners held on 5/5/25. Okay. I need a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to authorize Resolution 05, 05, 20, 25A. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Is that all you needed to, this time?
Yeah, the other paperwork needs to be signed.
Yeah. Get this one here down the way. It is taken care of.
That's just you, right?
No, just me.
Yep.
You guys just gave me permission.
Yep.
Well, there's a couple in there, one, at least one, Holly will have to sign too.
Okay, yeah, there's, I saw those. Okay.
Don't rush out here, do you sign it? Did you hear?
Do you leave any tourism?
Oh, okay. Do you want me to do everything at once, tourism, RDP, theater?
Sure. Yes, yeah.
Okay. We did, I'll come up. We did, I'm working on nickel plate, I'm heading up RDP now, as we know, and coordinating all the festivals. We want, and we've been doing food truck ordinances with the city, the DORA resolutions with the city, we are wanting to make, use what we've got, which was my mother's favorite saying, make what we have better, and add one mini festival this year, which in light coordination with the theater. But starting with the nickel plate, we've got wonderful music planned, a big parade, I handed out 100 applications to Ed, to get going, he's fired up as you can imagine. And we've been, committee work wise, we've been wanting to figure out a way to really engage kids, more than just chalk drawings on the sidewalk. A member brought up a program she used to help with in Indianapolis called Touch a Truck. And any community heads here listening, I'm going to need your help on this. Kids love seeing, number one favorite is a snowplow, by the way, cranes, ambulances, all of it, you, just a combine, you name it. Fire trucks, old and new, work and work it with the parade, some of the parade people where they can come and park. Helicopter, if we can do it, like, they love it, and it helps tie bonds with local law enforcement, veterans, we'll be reintroducing our hero banners at that point as well. So many kids think of police and fire as emergency, or possibly bad news, this helps tie those binds. Big equipment takes space, I talked to city council last week for Board of Works for road closures, I have them listed. I'd also love to use the old shale property. Now, I did reach out to the farmers market before, like, a week or two ago, to involve them with the festival, and they were pretty adamant that they use the green space at the police station for the...
Motion.
And I just said, we can work through this, like, we need, you know, I want big army truck, you know, Oscar Wells has a giant army truck, like, think about it, every kid loves that. And we can incorporate the art by, we already have volunteers online to help, you know, where they can draw them and all that. So courthouse space, lawn for the live concerts, I know there was a slight issue last year. I'm in charge.
The buck stops there.
Exactly. We've got the same professional staging company lined up, you know, Greg is fantastic, I've known him for a decade. We've got wonderful acts from Brett Evans, he'll be in the parade and then pull in, we've got a John Cougar show coming, and then a little rock and roll show for the evening versus, you know, we're not going to have one headliner, kind of three different, a fine art tent is coming, meet artists, you know, I love the crafts and the t-shirts, but I want some paintings back, I want to see...
So you want to use the courthouse lawn too? Kerry, any thoughts?
And the green space.
Concerns? You okay with it as long as you got, can you guys work together and get along and...
Yeah, the, I mean...
I mean...
The only issue I had was like the cords were so hot, they burned, they burnt stripes into the grass last year.
I heard about that, like I...
And then, when she told me they were backing in the semi-trailer for the stage, she told me one spot, but it actually got put in a different spot into the yard, and I didn't know that, so it kind of killed some of the yard right in that area. I just, we spent so much money to make that yard look beautiful, tall and green, and I understand, it's, it's taxpayers' property, so...
And they love it, I mean, they bring their lawn chairs and they, you know, stay all day.
I'm, I'm okay with it, I just, you know, it is what it is, I mean...
What do you guys think, you okay?
I mean, it's...
So, so, so you guys keep in touch and...
I'll give you a card.
Julie's easy to work with.
I'm really, I really am. And we'd like to have it in the same space as we did last year, while food trucks on each street, same lineup, I would just love the heavy equipment over here, just little tables and people don't go to see, exactly, exactly. I did have a pitch to have a Spider-Man on the courthouse somewhere, but I'm not quite ready for that.
The suction tub's going up the side, aren't they?
Exactly, or hire a professional climber, but we'll save that for...
The only thing I ask is the chalk drawing, which I don't care on it, they just, they drew on the lions last year.
I know, I don't, I, I love kids, I love Halloween, I don't like chalk drawing, we're going to try to do something a little different, because it's there for a long time.
Yeah, it was on the lions, I had to power wash them, so...
Yeah, we, someone did that in front of the theater once, and within 24 hours, my husband came down with a diesel powered steam washer, because he knew, they use paint too, and I was like, get it out of here. So...
As long as you two guys work together, work, work your egg distance.
We're good.
That's going to be on the 23rd.
But you've got that, you've got my email, you've got Ed Richard's email on there, if you know anyone that wants to be in the parade. We're starting the parade a little later this year, I think there was a little disconnect last year, I want the parade to end and the festival be ready, so, we'd also like some financial help, if it's, I know this is a heck of a year for budget, and I heard 58 more things for past Friday, but I don't watch the news. You know better than that, but...
Is it in here somewhere?
Yes, on the, yes, 10,000 would be great. I know, I personally know. I know.
Have, have we ever talked to the Tourism Board?
We, I've already applied, and...
Have you applied?
And I've received, I've applied to Indiana Art Commission, I don't, it's the state level, in the past, we get 4,000 every year, I, you know better than I that this year could be very weird. Our REMC roundup, city, I've asked for double. And Community Foundation is giving me another like two weeks to like round up numbers from everybody, and they're super generous, they will basically match what we get, so...
So you got two weeks to do it. Going to say, we can't give you no money unless it goes through the council, I mean, we got to make sure that...
I know, but I wanted you to know where I was at.
Okay, alright.
And it's not a hard deadline, that they put, the Community Foundation presents to their board first week of June, I can have it all filled out with the numbers. I happen to know how supportive this commission is to the arts, so, I mean, if it's five, that's awesome, if it's 10, extra brownie points, because there's another level of this entry coming your way.
If you don't mind going to the council meeting, what?
Two weeks from tomorrow night.
Two weeks from tomorrow night?
I can do that.
I'll be there too, so...
Okay, perfect.
I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee you, they're going to have to figure out...
This is a weird and wild world, but we need it, that court, that property is a wonderful answer. And then, on the theater, I ran across an old worksheet in my computer, it was called Lights, Camera, Action, and asked you guys for 239,000, three years ago, and we didn't do that, but we did a lot, and I want you to look at that and see what we've done, because it couldn't have happened without you. We welcome back 25,000 people through the doors of the Times Theater in two years. And in case anyone in this room doesn't know, the county helped quite a bit with that. 3,000 kids have received free movies and popcorn, seniors love their day, my God, do not change their schedule, you hear about it forever. Live music to the forefront, we thought it was going to be more country and Round Barn Opry-ish, rock and roll wins, and I do that by sales and data, the numbers are terrific, we had 300 people there this weekend for ACDC, wasn't it awesome? It was unbelievable. So again, maybe, and it's just all, 58% of our attendees come from out of this area too, which holds up those numbers, as far as that's mid-range art or cultural tourist or attendee to an event spends on average 60 to 100 dollars. So, we're making an impact, we, I, I often say we're in the shallow end, but we're not, we are the first population on earth that really has big choices on where we want to live, and if you make it, you know, we just make it fun and better, it can happen, so, I'm really proud of it.
I know, the only complaint I get is, there's no parking downtown.
Oh, God, they can...
Well, that's a, that's a good...
I will say this, on a Saturday, and the bands, I do this, like, the ACDC band got here at 1:00 Saturday, I got 20,000 steps on Saturday, by the way, I was like, why am I at XO? By 1:00 Rochester's empty, and that, you know, that's fine, there's soccer games and whatever, so when the bands get there, I want, I go, I want you to look outside, there's no cars, like, there, it's, and then by 4:00, I have them peek out, by 6:00, because they're at the restaurants, I'm like, you guys are doing this, like, you, when you come to a small town, we're building our reputation, but we really don't have a reputation yet, and, you know, you're making this kind of difference, and get on Facebook, look at the review, the band just left us, they had, they couldn't believe it, so...
If you've never been to one, you need to go to one.
It's not, it is not a bar band, it's not a cover band, like, there were several first time attendees this weekend, I mean, that's ACDC, who doesn't love that? And they're like, we had, you know, people get an impression that they, who knows where they even get it from, so, we made $10,000 last year, unheard of, we did a quarter of a million dollars, like, 268 at the theater. We, that terrific news that we made money, but it's not enough to keep reinvesting, we have a million ideas that we simply can't fund. Right now, I have a pitch in front of the city to offer free programming for kids and seniors, summer, you know, people are so busy, we need, we just need some capital, and I was writing some projects, this could go council, but, you know, the bat, we need another motorized screen to come down on the wall, if you were there, what a difference it made Saturday. And you're able to make an announcement, and it just adds a level. Or something as simple as, we're looking to raise 3,500, all our murals, oh my God, and we've already paid for high resolution images to be made and captured of those, but we want to do limited edition prints, you know, all sorts of stuff to add to our, you know, fundraising and stability, so, any consideration there, again, I know you guys are way ahead of the pack, but anything like that would be fantastic. Any questions?
That's great, Julie, you guys are doing awesome.
We have a wonderful senior concert series coming this summer too.
That's for you, Dave, she's looking at you, not me.
No, you know what I did, I did 55 and over, which I'm like, I just cut out 90%, but summer's busy, and we need income, that building wakes up eating money, our insurance is $1,700 a month. Oh, yeah, the marquee's like having two brand new trucks hanging out your window, like, I mean, that adds up, but, you know, our attendance drops quite a bit, and that, that was my, you know, with the city, I'm like, if we could just get some people in and sell some popcorn, you know, to help, because that's, it's a big number.
Looks good, thanks, Julie.
Okay.
Appreciate everything you're doing.
Yep, it's looking awesome.
We love it.
Okay. Tracy? Oh, Brittany!
It's okay.
She said her name, Brad, sorry about that.
She was hiding.
She was hiding there behind Brad.
Morning. I'll make it quick. Tomorrow kicks off half of the dispatcher's police training for our protocols that we're going to launch, projected date is the second week of July to go live with that, but at least they'll all be certified after the end of next week. But that being said, I don't remember if I told you guys, but I did do the quality assurance for the police, which I completed certified, so that way, when we go live, I'll be able to start queuing calls, we call it, to make sure that they're being compliant from the beginning, so we don't form any bad habits. This week I have a meeting with Parkview to kind of talk about where we are today, where we see ourselves in the future, so I'm kind of excited about that, when it regards to dispatching. I went to the job fair last week at Rochester, a lot of the kids just think that we answer the phone, and that's about where it ends, so I tried to educate as much as I could, but the Sheriff's Department had some cool vest and push-up competitions, so kind of stole my thunder, but that's alright. And then Friday, we had the mock disaster, dispatch received a 911 call live, so they broadcasted it, the volume wasn't fantastic, but they were able to see kind of start to finish, I was kind of bummed, Samaritan's my favorite, but they were stood down for wind, and then Lutheran flew over to land, and then right when they were circling the area for their LZ zone, they received a live call, so as quick as they... And then right when they were circling the area for their L Z zone, they received a live call, so as quick as they circled, the quick as they went, so. Um, the helicopter, I kind of feel like ties it together for kids to be like, oh goodness, but I don't know. Hopefully it got through their heads enough to, I haven't heard anything, so I'm glad the program went well. Um, tomorrow I'm doing a walkthrough, um, with R H S, Rochester High School. I don't know what it means, but I assume we're just walking through. So I think they're gonna show us where all like the A E Ds are and all the important stuff, so. Um, that's really important too. Just a reminder, um, make sure I'm not missing something. Um, I do leave next Monday evening for certified training officer training. I'm taking another dispatcher with me. That's kind of my nighttime trainer unofficially, so. Um, to help her and to help me being new, we're gonna go through that course. Um, so Jennifer, my assistant will be, I'll, I'll have everything operational from a distance. It's I think it's down Hancock County, so it's a little bit of a drive, but nothing catastrophic. Jennifer will do fine. The girls are pretty good, so I'm not overly concerned. But yeah, I'll be back on the fifteenth probably in late afternoon. And then I did submit lastly, um, my five-year plan for dispatch. I haven't asked for money yet, so that's great. Um, it's a big project. I mean, I, my original plan was to ask for one radio a year because the programming for the radios are expiring. So basically what that means in twenty thirty, um, if anything happens to those radios, when one goes down, they're all gonna go down because of compatibility and there's no way for me to fix it. There's not gonna be parts. I mean, when they say it's phased out, that's what they mean. Um, I think they're already starting to have trouble getting what they need to fix what we have. So an upgrade is kind of not a, a want, it's definitely a need and it's not cheap. So my five-year plan, um, is I ha- I have to, you know, come to the boards and ask for you know, all that money. Right now I have a quote for what it is. Um, unfortunately, as the years progress, of course, with inflation and stuff like that, it's probably just gonna continue to grow like everything else. Does it have to be done tomorrow? No, it just has to be done by twenty thirty. So I think right now, well, right now I have three fully operational terminals, obviously. I would like to include a fourth just to be safe, especially with those winds and the storms that come through. You know, we have three, but if I come in, that makes me four and it pretty much makes me useless to help them if I don't have a radio to operate off of. Um, so that plan did include that fourth terminal, so.
If you've got that put together, would you make sure we get a copy of it when you send it to the council?
Yeah, I did send.
Did you send it?
Yeah, so that quote came from Motorola Direct. I did speak to E R S and they do the same things and he thought on that quote, there might be, you know, maybe some. I don't want, I don't know how to say it, but there might have been a couple of things that weren't necessarily necessary. Um, so I am waiting for a quote for them. Just like I said though, my fear is that the price is gonna continuously change and of course, being new and stuff, I don't know what that looks like. You know, what percentages per year that looks, but it doesn't matter if we wait till twenty thirty, you know, so with that being twenty twenty-five, that gives me a little faith. We might be able to find something somewhere, but as of right now, I think it was seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. So, makes me sick. But hopefully, like I said, in a couple of years, we'll be able to be in a better place and move forward from there, but twenty thirty's a cutoff. I am gonna reach out to, um, I D H S. I know that some grants and stuff were frozen, especially when it comes to public safety. I'm hoping somewhere, someplace, there's an exception to that, um, as far as stuff like that specifically. So I'll reach out to them today and try to get some information of what all those frozen assets, um, that, what that includes. So maybe there's a way through it and then of course, I'll start talking to people on, on grant stuff. I know we just got a new policy on that, so. I'll keep you posted on, hopefully some availability. That'd be a blessing for us in the county. Um, to be, hopefully get a couple of dollars at least, so.
Things will help.
Yeah, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Brittany.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Casey.
I don't even know where to begin. I, I've sent out my Form elevens. They got mailed April thirtieth. I do wanna thank the surveyor's office. They did allow me to use Lacy. Uh, we're the, one of the very few, uh, assessment people that we do it in-house where we fold and stuff them. Uh, we don't pay extra tax dollars to have it done, so seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six is a lot of envelopes to, to stuff and papers to hold, so they seem to, to help us out every year, so, uh, that's nice. Uh, with the Form elevens going out, uh, it is no longer, I, I'm laughing though, but it is no longer safe for me to go to the store. Uh, apparently anniversary parties are anywhere, so if you hear me sobbing in a bathroom, just walk by, I'll get over it. Everybody is livid. Um, it's nothing I can do, I, I, to an extent. So the cost tables did go up. Kathy called me this morning. Hers went up. How much? A hundred and? A hundred and five thousand. My home value went up eighty-six thousand. Uh, we're in separate portions. Uh, yeah, everybody, no one is safe. Since the D L G F, uh, the governor allowed the D L G F to increase their cost tables on only dwellings, uh, business buildings and then, um, industrial, uh, the factories. This year going forward, uh, he has also allowed the D G, the D L G F to, uh, change the cost per square foot on what I'm calling all of our accessory buildings, granaries, pole barns, sheds. You name it, if it's not lived in or worked in, it will go up this coming year. I have no control over that. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be a, a little tough with all the changes that he's allowed and, and things going forward. On that note, um, I have, through the market study and through their approval, uh, I did change how we find our market factors, so even though you may be impacted by that, uh, I did dial down, uh, what the market factor your house goes against. So just to give you an example, um, one of the market factors in Kewana uh, would have jumped to a one point eight-six, but because we used two years instead of three years and then I begged, borrowed and pleaded, I got it down to a one point three-two, which means if your house is now a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, instead of it getting multiplied by a one point eight-six, it's gonna be multiplied by a one point three-two. I hate to say it's the best I can do, but it's the best the state of Indiana would allow me to do. Uh, next to me begging them to almost wipe that out, uh, they wouldn't let me do that. So I'm trying, even though they're not helping me as much as they probably could. So, uh, with that personal property, um, that they did, they were gonna change it, but this year it is still eighty thousand, so I do have staff still working, uh, with that. But next year, it was supposed to go to a million because the governor at the last minute signed in that it would be eighty thousand, uh, because he didn't wanna change things that were already in motion for us. There was a lot of people complaining, uh, in my world. So he jumped it to two million next year. So that means that the personal property that Fulton County will take in will drop down to, if I'm lucky, we might have five filers. Because of that, yeah, it's, it's terrible. And that, that is, uh, mainly because there's, uh, several people that have offsets through things that they're doing that, that's giving them tax credits, so we don't, we don't need to file. Uh, so I don't know where that's gonna, you know, how long that's gonna stick around if that's gonna change, but as of right now, it's jumping to two million. Uh, April thirtieth, I submitted, um, my work plan for the next four-year cyclical review to the state. Uh, it's been accepted. I don't know that it's been approved yet, uh, but that does involve us doing re-house reassessment. Because, uh, the state of Indiana is changing the personal property, what that's gonna do for me is, uh, I'm looking at the best way to utilize the tax dollars that we'll have and what we can do. I know before I was, I've always looked to do it in-house, uh, before I was looking to hire another individual to do that full-time. But with them changing the parameters of what personal property is and some various other things, um, I'm actually gonna need to rewrite job descriptions for half my staff, uh, which will involve them now going out and doing field work to offset that reassessment. So we will stick with what we have. I may need to take my part-time to full-time. But, you know, I, I'm still looking to save us money in one way, shape or form, you know, come hell or high water, we'll get this done. On that note, um, I've been out in, uh, in, in the county, talking to different people. I was at South Mud and at Nyona Lake, their conservancy this weekend. They finalized my final date for my mobile offices. I have a feeling I'm gonna be desperately busy. Um, May twenty-fourth, I will be at the Akron Library and May thirty-first, I'll be at Kewana Library. Both of those are Saturdays. I'll be there from eight to noon. On June, Tuesday, June third, I will be at the sheriff's department, working from four to eight P M. That was more for safety instead of doing it in my office in the corner of the basement. And then Nyona, I will be back there June seventh, uh, after their meeting starts, so I'm thinking about eleven-thirty to two-thirty. I will be at South Mud Lake doing my mobile office, hoping to explain out the Form elevens. I did reach out to the Association of Assessors and I've got a question going around. Um, I do have a gentleman, his church has bought other properties at Bruce Lake and they had just bought another one and they buy these lake houses and then they turn around and slap the church exemption on them. I talked to my D L G F, um, rep and then they told me to kind of refer to a county attorney. I don't have a county attorney. I may need to send you some things because it looks like they're making it more of an Airbnb. They're doing it under a tax exemption because they're a church, but yet they're asking eight hundred dollars a night. It is not fifty-one percent used for, uh, the word charitable is really kind of baffling me at this point, so. Uh, once the association gets done at looking at everything and maybe voicing if anyone else through our counties have had this issue, uh, I may need to refer to you for some help and guidance because
Contact I R S.
Yeah, I don't know that my board is gonna know what to do with that, any more than I know what to do with that. But I don't wanna give a tax exemption continued to purchasing lake homes under the name of a church that isn't truly being used. So, yeah, so there's that. And then my final thing, since you are here, John, um, they, uh, they did ask me at the conservancy, the bridge at Nyona Lake, they're having, a lot of sediment has built up in the grates there. Are you aware of that?
I'm not.
Okay.
We have that problem.
Okay, so they're like, who do we talk to about that? I said, I don't know. There's, there's a meeting on Monday. I will ask, so. Uh, they have a lot of sediment. They, I asked before, I said, was it jetted or sucked out? And the guy didn't really know. He just knows that they came. They did their thing four years ago and now it's backing up. And he said his front yard looks like the river when it rains, so. I don't know if you can help them at all or reach out to somebody there. I think Bill Hewitt is, is the president out there, so. That's all I have. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but, um, my month and a half's about to get super unfun, so.
Exciting, exciting, exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Hello, everybody. Um, two things at the hospital. One, I was gonna thank the sheriff's department, um, for coming out last weekend and doing the drug collection. It was a it was a big day. I mean, I think they boxed up twenty or thirty significant boxes for, uh, getting rid of old drugs. So just a reminder, don't foam in the trash, don't foam in the, in the sinks or the toilets or any of those kinds of things. They gotta be disposed of properly. Um, and then the other one is, we're down to forty days to go to Epic. So as you go into your doctor's offices coming up over this next month, um, just be patient with the, the staff. Uh, they're doing their full-time job and then learning a new system. And, uh, when we go live on June fourteenth, everybody's visits for that first month or so are gonna be a little bit slower. But we're reducing the number of visits that each of our providers can see per day, so that the staff have enough time to go through the paperwork. So it might be a little bit harder to get in for a visit in June and July. And then when you get there, you're gonna have a little bit more paperwork to do. We're gonna pretend we've never seen you before, even if you were there the day before, and make you go through the whole system from start to finish. That way we can get it done, done right. They'll also be sending you at that point in time, and some of you may receive this here in the next couple of weeks, an email or a text message for, from a MyChart, so that you can get signed up for the portal. So, uh, once you have a, a, a visit in the system, you'll get a reminder and that allows you to sign up. That allows you to get your medical record, pay your bill, register for your, your visits, um, schedule a visit. Um, if you went to Cleveland Clinic, Mayo Clinic, uh, Community Hospital, Saint Joe in Plymouth, Mission Walk, any of those, you'll be able to pull all your medical records, um, into that app. Um, so just be nice to us for about a month and a half, two months, if you would. It's gonna be pretty rough. I mean, we're switching from two systems that use, if you're computer guys, that use the old, uh, M S DOS type, uh, programming um, to cloud-based system and one system instead of two. The nice thing is, is that obviously from you guys as a patient perspective, you'll register once and if you get sent over to do labs, they don't have to, I mean, they'll pull it up and check you in real quick, but they don't have to go through the whole thing again. Um, which is really, really nice. Um, you also won't have to have two portals, cause now you have to have one to give you your hospital stuff and one to give you your doctor's office stuff. That'll all go away. So, uh, be kind. We wanna thank you ahead of time and, uh, we'll be going live June fourteenth.
Thanks, Brittany.
Well, the F M H.
All of your data, so all of your data that you have in the histories, that, that'll be in what we call our legacy system. And so you can go in and pull some of that in, um, but your physician's offices will have access to all of that. Let's say you go into the doctor the first time and they need something, they can actually pull that whole record into your new system. It'll be in a PDF type format, so it won't be the same kind of, you know, system it is now, but it'll all be there.
What's your last name?
Rogers.
Rogers, okay, thank you.
Just like Mister. I live in Orlando, make believe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We had a, the, a fence building workshop, the twelfth. And that was a great success. Um, I don't know if you've heard of White Oak Bison, um, but it's here in Fulton County and he's my associate supervisor and there was, um, a request to do a high fence building workshop. And he was at our board meeting last Tuesday and he said it was a great success, that they actually want more. So if you guys are interested in that, there'll be more to come. Earth Day with Cass County, there was over a hundred and fifty people in attendance. Kids and adults, people of all ages came. It was so much fun, so. What I did is we had a model of a watershed. I don't know if you guys know what a watershed is, but it's just a piece of land like every place in the world has a watershed and where the water falls, it flows. And where it flows, it ends up in a river. Fulton County's, typical watershed. Cass County's, the Eel River. So I had my little model out and we had it as realistic as possible with the tractors and the cows and everything. And I have these little shakers and it's supposed to be acid rain and pesticides. And of course you have brown sprinkles for poop, because all kids love poop, you know? And so I'm out there with my model and I'm, I give them, give them these containers, you know? And they're all excited. They have no idea what they're about to do. But I let them shake it on there. I'm like, okay, where do you, where do you think pesticides would be? And we have a farm and, and, um, of course you have your house and, and your lake and your, um, oh, shopping area. You got pesticides everywhere, you know? Um, where do you think, where do you think fertilizer goes? And so they'll sprinkle it there. And I'm talking like, some of these kids were tiny. I had to hold them up so they could sprinkle it on there, you know? And, um, they were all putting on there. One of the parents goes, that, that's not really pesticides, is it? It, it's Jell-O or, or brown sprinkles or soy sauce, cause you have motor oil, cause motor oil's all over the place. So they sprinkle all of this stuff on there and then I have, I have a, um, watering can and I make it rain. And then they see where all this water goes. And they're like, ew, it, it's brown and it smells. I'm like, okay, where is it going? And they can see that there's streams on the, the, uh, display. And I'm like, where is it going? And they're like, oh, it's going in the river. Yeah, that's what happens when it rains. Everything goes in the river. And then we have And then we have little filter strips, because those are always important pest management practices right there. You have your filter strips in your wetlands, and those are in place on one of them. And then they can see how those actually stop the, the manure or the soy sauce, which is your motor oil and stuff, and it actually absorbs them into the, the filter strips were sponges. But it, it absorbs it, and they're like, oh, well, that, that stopped there, it didn't go into the stream. I'm like, that's why those are important, so we want those in place. But yeah, it was, it was great. We did it six times, because it takes a lot to clean up afterwards, at least twenty minutes. So six times we ran that, and everybody learned, even, even the adults learned. And that's, that's what it's about, it really is. That's what I love, that's why I love my job, that's why I'm smiling all the time. So it was great, it really was. And then we were able to do, on the twenty-second, Earth Day with Solid Waste. We partnered with them here, here in Fulton County. And can I tell you guys, your Solid Waste is awesome? Like, they don't charge you, others charge for some of your guys' stuff. And you have a drive-through, how convenient is that? I don't know if you've ever took a tour of their facility, but it's amazing, like, I learned so much. They're just going through it, and I, I wasn't even, you know, I'm there to hand out trees, because it's Earth Day. But I wanted to go on the tour with the Christian Academy, and it's amazing, it really is. So yeah, if you guys haven't taken a tour, take a tour, you'll learn, you'll learn stuff, trust me. So I handed out forty white oak trees and thirty tulip trees. So we got those into the hands of the Christian Academy, and anybody that wanted to come through that day and wanted a tree, we were able to do that. And then we had State and Byer Fun, which go over, it's how to get high schoolers interested into natural resource and conservation. And they go over, they have a current issue, forestry, wildlife, aquatic ecology, and soil and land use. And on those, they actually go, it starts regional, then state, and then can actually go national with that. So we did the regional one, and then this one recently was the state. There were several teams. And those high schoolers, like, they're really interested in it, and some of the stuff that they create, I, I wish you guys were there so you could see their little models and everything to be able to explain their presentation. But they're so detailed and everything, it was, it was really good. And that's open to anybody that's a high school student, you just have to have a team of five. So if, if you guys know of anybody. And then what I have coming up is, I'm getting ready to partner with Stark County on Wonders of Wetlands. And that is to educate adults, it could be teachers. Or I know Linda there at the Kewana Library does a lot of events, but anybody that's wanting to learn, we work with, we partner, we're partnering with Stark County, but we're also partnering with D N R. And they provide project, it's called Project Wet and Project Wild, and it's actually hands-on educational learning materials. Because you go to the schools and they're getting tablets. So we try to get them out of that box and hands-on materials, and it meets all the, your state requirements. So that's what we're getting ready to do. And then, other than that, budgets, fair, and a native plant sale. So we're hoping to launch our native plant sale at fair time, and we'll be taking orders clear through December of this year, and then plants will be available for pickup in May. But other than that, that's all I have.
Sounds good, thanks, Megan.
Questions?
Always like your presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your name?
Megan Malat.
I think I asked you that last time. Thanks. I just wanted to get permission to sign my contract. I sent you guys, did you get all that for the new contracts that we have to send out for our Laredo subscription, which is our searching software? And, and they're raising your price, and so I'm going to raise our price to our subscribers, so we can kind of make a little money instead of.
You got enough money in your budget to cover it?
Yeah, they're not going to charge us, uh, uh, they're going to charge it, but they're just going to, they get the money, and then they give us a percentage of it back.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Portion back, so that's why I wanted it. So all I need is just permission to sign it.
I'll make a motion to give Deb permission to sign the contract.
Motion made and seconded to give Deb permission to sign the Laredo contract, all in favor? Carries three out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, takes care of our department heads, Jerry. You ready for your third reading on your vacation of your property? If I can find the right one here. It's. This one?
Yes.
This is theirs?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and in the past, can I have a motion for going by title only?
For the third reading?
The third reading.
I will give you that permission.
Okay. Ryan?
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Okay. This is for the vacation finale in.
Oh, well.
Albinai Township, you have to think of it there for a second. Ordinance vacating public alleyways and streets, north, south, east, west, alleyways and streets within the original and subsequent flats of the county of Fulton, Indiana. Albinai Township, Fulton County, Indiana, its ordinance, oh, four, two, one, two, oh, two, five, A. Can I have your motion to approve this?
Make that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve this, all in favor? Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, we got to sign it here. And then, Tim, you want to talk about yours?
Sure. Right, Tim. By the way, Nyona Lake, Tom Trent is the current president, but Ray, Tom Trent. Randy Hill's probably a better person to reach out to, though he actually has a desk at the wastewater plant. A lot of them, if you don't have their personal cell phones, you won't be able to. I would try calling the wastewater plant, ask for Randy Hill, he can get you in contact with Tom Trent, if you don't have a better contact. So I haven't been here for about eighteen months, I think, to talk about this grant, so I'll give you a really quick rundown. I have some more detail, I don't know how much detail you want to hear. So we'll get to the basics, see if you're good with that. If you want more, you can ask questions. So in late twenty twenty-three, we applied for an O C R A C D B G grant for Fulton County. Fulton County essentially applied on behalf of Nyona South Mud Lake, because they were an ineligible entity to apply for this, you had to be a municipality. So the county applied on their behalf. You received six thousand four hundred eighty dollars from them, from their operation and maintenance fund to act as the local match. And we obtained grant funds of fifty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars from the state. All of that covered all of the expenses that went into the study. We contracted with Jones Petrie Rafinsky to complete the study. Their total was sixty thousand, one thirty-five was their contract amount. They've had a small portion of that paid out. We can't pay out the final portion until we request the funds from the state. In order to do that, we have to submit this resolution showing that we have officially accepted the utility study that they completed. You're not signing yourselves up for anything other than basically acknowledging that the study was complete and submitted as outlined in their contract. So you're not putting yourselves up and putting yourselves on board for anything to do with the results of those study. But if you'd like to hear more details about the results of the study, I can give those to you. So they studied the wastewater utility and the presence of flooding around the Nyona South Mud Lake Conservancy service area, which is essentially the houses around Nyona and South Mud Lakes and a limited area along East six fifty South in Fulton County and West thirteen fifty North in Miami County, and also includes the town of Macy in Miami County, as they are also part of the service area. The local match funds were provided to the local county treasurer on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Six thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twelve cents in grant funds were then transferred to the county in July twenty twenty-four. Those funds were dispersed to the engineer and to North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council, and we provided a letter to request the final fifty-one thousand eight twenty-four eighty-eight to be transferred from the state to Fulton County to pay off the balance of both contracts. Essentially, the findings were limited in the town of Macy. You probably don't care to hear about the town of Macy, I'll stick with Nyona and South Mud Lake. The engineering firm surprised us, surprised us by recommending that they not be used to complete updates to the collection system. Essentially, they identified that the collection system updates were minimal enough that Asbury Water Technologies, who does the operations of that wastewater plant, could engineer those updates themselves based on the outline that was provided in the study. And they have then modified their rates to start saving up money to start doing that in small bunches to update their collection system. Primarily, the collection system was having problems because of flooding. All of their grind pump stations were underwater whenever it flooded, which was causing a huge amount of water to go into the wastewater plant and all kinds of problems. So they're essentially elevating most of those stations. I believe there's somewhere in the vicinity of sixty grinder pump stations located in the collection system, which was way more than I've ever experienced. So the flooding mitigation, they actually had a unique suggestion for that. They're going to work on something called upstream mitigation, which is in essence trying to obtain land from local landowners that's not being used because it's not farmable or buildable and converted to wetlands. And that will slow down the flow of water from the upstream areas down into the lakes. Essentially, when it rains, the streams flood because of the silt that was previously mentioned, is actually causing less room for the water in the upstream creeks. So the water is basically running straight into the lake much faster than it used to twenty or thirty years ago. That's causing the lake to flood. One of the other things that they actually explored was changing the legal level of the lake, which I didn't even know was a thing. They determined that that was way too complicated of an ordeal to go through. And trying to create wetlands is something that they can actually obtain a large amount of grant money for, so that's going to cut the cost that they're actually going to have to proceed with improving the flooding. I think their goal might be to address the flooding first, because as I mentioned before, the flooding is what's causing a lot of the problems with the collection system. The hardest one for them to swallow was the, the wastewater plant. The estimate for the wastewater plant work was about four point three million dollars. They pursued potentially looking at using S R F and an additional C D B G grant to address those. But even that was going to require a minimum of approximately two million dollars in local match funds, and that's best case scenario, probably. So at this point, I think they're going to work on the collection system and the flooding issues, but I'm not sure, they haven't made any final decisions. At this point, they're going to work on pursuing local landowners. J P R identified some plots of land that would be good for converting into wetlands to help some of that mitigation. So I think they're going to reach out to those landowners. And as I said, they've already modified their rates, they're basically tucking money away for the next rainy day, because they realize it's going to be a very expensive fix. So, give me questions or want any additional detail into the findings of the study. So once you sign that resolution, we can submit that to J P R, they'll add that as an addendum to the study, and they'll provide the five hard copies. We'll make sure that Kathy's office gets one of those five hard copies. The other ones will be kept on file in our office, the Nyona South Mud Conservancy Wastewater Plant Office and the Town of Macy Town Hall.
No problem with the sign in that, how?
So all you're needing is this approved and signed?
You have a resolution.
Where's the resolution?
That's also needed.
That's this one right here?
Yes.
The resolution's the most important thing for today. The letter we can sign later, we can't submit that to the state until Kathy and I talk about the other funds. We have to get all the, the funding straightened out before we submit that request for money, because there's a very fast ticking clock once we submit that. They're going to transfer funds to you, it's going to be transferred electronically, you won't get any notification, you have the money, and you have to pay it out within a very small timeframe, or you get a slap on the wrist by the state when they come in and do monitoring. So we'll hold that letter once you get it signed, and Kathy and I will make sure we have all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted, and then we'll submit it to get the money we need to pay off the rest of the contracts.
Okay, so I'll read this, I'll go ahead and read this resolution. Resolution is oh, five, oh, five, two, oh, two, five. Resolution of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners of Indiana, authorizing the approval of the utility study of the stormwater and wastewater. Whereas Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, had identified adequate reason to analyze the stormwater and wastewater utilities. And whereas the Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, have hired Jones Petrie Rafinsky Corp. to define and describe issues and obstacles, advise the county of options and make recommendations to address them. And whereas the Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, have received federal community block grant dollars from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to fund this study, and has contributed six thousand four hundred eighty dollars to a local match for this project. And whereas the Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, reviewed the process and completed the study thoroughly and is satisfied with the services performed, information contained therein, and the methodology applied. And whereas the Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, have received six copies of this document for our records, and will keep them on file for future reference. Now therefore be it resolved Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, that the final, one, the final document is hereby approved and contingent upon comments and approved and received from the Fulton County, or from Indiana Office of County and Rural Affairs. And Fulton County Board of Commissioners Fulton County, Indiana, will fully consider all comments and backs, and feedback received from the Indiana Office of County and Rural, or Community and Rural Affairs, and will direct it to the consultant to provide amended copies of this plan, directing all said comments adopted by the Commissioners of Fulton County, the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County, Indiana, on five, five. Okay, there it be.
Glad you had to read that.
Got a little dry mouth, tongue tied there for a moment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution oh, five, oh, five, two, oh, two, five. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. And at the same time, do we need to create?
You can do that now, or you can do it at your leisure. Like I said, we got a lot to straighten out before we're ready to submit that.
We can hang on to this, but we'll go ahead and, well, in the mood, get the approval on it. May fifth, twenty twenty-five, C D B G Accounting Section has this letter to us, the State of Indiana, Fulton County. Consist, our Fulton County consists of Northern Indiana Regional Planning Council to submit and claim for the Community Development Block Grant P L two, two, one, one, four, via the E G M S system of following amount, professional fees fifty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents, with that being the total. I'll require my signature, so if I can have approval?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve this letter, all in favor?
Thank you much. Kathy, if you can just scan those to me when you have a chance, we'll get everything else straightened out. And the person that was here talking about nine-one-one operators?
Yeah.
Brittany.
Looking for equipment, do you know what kind of equipment that was by chance?
It's the radio consoles that they do their dispatching on.
Peter or Seth, somebody could pass this along to her.
Sure, yeah.
We don't charge for grant writing, so I'm happy to help.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
What was your last name?
Carson.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Don't forget courthouse.
I'll get you.
All right, please, man.
Thanks, Tim.
You've earned grant money.
We're going to be working with you, but I mean, oh, always.
I was waiting for my boss's name to come up on your presentation.
Exactly.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Brad, and approve the, along with minutes from April twenty-first?
Yep.
Ryan? We approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the May twen, or April twenty-first meeting, all in favor? Carries three, oh. Appropriations. Okay, see the appropriations? We have going to approve those.
Yep. A lot of them for this early year, but that's.
Okay, we have here eleven thirty-five Kimbridge Highway. The appropriations are one hundred thousand for Bridge one oh six, and miscellaneous highway, one hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, for a total of two hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars ninety-nine cents. This is a reverse transaction done earlier in the year to meet the federal aid grant match for Bridge one sixty-one. I'll just read these and assign them here after we get them through. Hold on. This is through highway appropriation. This is through highway appropriation, meaning engineering and study fees for fifty thousand dollars to cover additional engineering fees due to non-budgeted projects. This is for sheriff, budget forty-three oh two, computer software, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Reason is funds requested for new guard one computer software for the jail staff to use in regards to inmates' location in the jail. This is already approved at prior council meeting. Okay, this is from the drainage board, eleven eighty-six, rainy day. General drain maintenance, eight thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents to pay RQAW for the mess up on Mud Lake. And one dollar oh one, unappropriated. This comes transportation and depots, one thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars and seven cents. Trial expense ordered by Judge Lee to pay for unappropriated county, or yeah, unappropriated county funds appropriating into the account used to pay fees to, for a trial to witness. Okay. These are all those. All these stand with approval?
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appropriations, all in favor? Carries three oh. I'll get these through here on that. Okay. We've got transfer requests. Got a transfer here from the, in the treasurer's office for DMs, four hundred dollars to continuing it for four hundred dollars. Next one is county commissioners, legal lawsuit, seventy-two hundred dollars from three, or three one, one oh one and to three six oh oh two, state institution, seventy-two hundred dollars, transfer to Allen County Juvenile Court, security detention holds, account is under budget for twenty twenty-five. And then this is the county commissioners general fund coming from appropriation, or account number thirty-two four hundred, published legals, three hundred dollars to account number thirty-three eight hundred for drainage assistance, three hundred dollars. Transfer to cover twenty twenty-four spring drain assessment and stormwater on county buildings. Okay. Approval on these?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we've got travel authorizations.
Yes, I seen some per DMs in there that.
I wondered about those too.
Can pay per DMs.
Those were filled out before we did the change.
Okay, so we're taking.
That'll be scratched off. Scratched off.
Okay.
All right.
I didn't make her redo those.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm good with them as long as the per DMs gets scratched off.
Okay, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, all, motion made, all in favor?
Yep.
Yep, okay, we got those. And then we'll have claims, so. Okay. We'll go through these here. You guys see all those and go along with them?
Yep.
Okay. First one is payroll, three hundred fourteen thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and forty-five cents and with payroll deduction of one hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cents. We've got Fulton County solid waste fees, thirty-three thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Miscellaneous claims, we got two hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents. We've got resolution oh four, one, five, two oh, two five, county general to rainy day. We've got wheel certex, eighty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Utilities, eighteen thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents. And card member services, seven, seventy-seven hundred dollars and fifty-four cents. And I think that goes through the stack here. Okay. All right, next we're going to go on to old business, anybody with any old business?
I don't.
Anybody out here, old business? Okay, going on to new business, anybody? Nope, Brian, Holly?
No.
Anybody in the audience?
I'll add one thing. Anyone wants an application to the nickel plate parade, I have copies at the Chamber of Commerce. As far, you can swing by and pick one up and if, or if anyone wants my card, I've got some, three. Thank you.
Steve, anything from the puzzle? Anybody else? If not, I hear a motion to adjourn, so. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? Carries three oh.